Okay, we'd like to call to order this meeting of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, February 12th at 7:05 PM. As we do with all our meetings, we begin with our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Dooley.
Amy Delardi.
And Pam. What I would like to do is remind everyone that this meeting is being taped and going to be broadcast audio and visual via NCTV, and so just keep that in mind with any of your public comments. And so as we like to do with all our meetings, we'll begin with public comment. If you have a public comment, if you could go to the microphone, introduce yourself and say your relationship with the school, or if you're a parent or residence, your street address. You ready? You're it.
We actually have one today.
Yay!
I'm Susan.
Is that on?
I'm Susan Klein, and I live at 48 Berkshire Street. And I would like the school committee to take into consideration, I'm not really sure how this works, so apologize, but I would like the consideration of a policy put into place where parents are notified without giving any information on the child, but notified if a child within our school system makes any kind of physical threat towards the school. Obviously, one-on-one students, that's not what we're speaking about, just, you know, obviously, speaking about the situation that happened earlier and other situations that have since happened. I understand privacy issues, I just think there's a way that we can come up with that says, you know, "We've handled it per our policy, please don't worry, your children's safety is our top concern, but we're letting you know this happened today or yesterday," so that we have the right to either ask questions or send our children to school, not send our children to school. Basically, as parents, use our own judgment of something that, of that nature that occurred in the schools. That's, I just would like for you guys to discuss adhering the policy to that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, moving on, administrative items. Let's see, we have, yep, we've received $1,1125.84 from the Norfolk TPA, books, playground, playground supplies, and a grant, grade five grant, all for HOD. And we received $35 of SAC program supplies from a family. And so would like someone to make a motion to accept the $1,160.84.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Any other announcements? As we do every year, we have to vote on fundraisers. And if you look at Exhibit 2, we have a list of fundraisers that are being sponsored by the schools. Scholastic Movie Night, Movie Night, TPA Bake Sale, at the Parents Conference and the Art Fairs, TPA Mixed Bag fundraiser, Dana Farber and Red Sox Rally Against Cancer, TPA Shoe Drive, Jump Rope For Heart, and Rainforest Mix Sale, all at the HOD. And then at Freeman, TPA Bake Sales, TPA Read Across America, Coins For Cures, TPA Scholastic Book Fair, TPA Movie Night, Kids' Art Fair, Jump Rope For Heart, N-Star, TPA Mixed Bag fundraiser, and the TPA Shoe Drive. I don't see on here a, isn't the NTA currently doing a fundraiser?
Yes, that's the Read Across America.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay, so that's...
It's really NTA.
NTA, okay, that's...
Yeah.
I'm like, I knew I got something at home just yesterday. Okay, so that's Read Across America, and that should actually be at both schools as well, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept these fundraisers?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I know there was, isn't there also another fundraiser going on right now, soup?
That was already done, so it should have come before the committee, but I think it was on the list for last year.
Okay.
But we didn't add it because it's complete.
Okay, and so what we did this year was, since it wasn't done at the beginning of the school, it's kind of confusing exactly how it was done last year, we just did, Pam put together all the fundraisers through the end of the year, end of this school year, then in August we'll vote, you know, August or September, we'll vote for the 2013-14 school year, so, okay. No further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2013-2014 calendar.
I had a comment on the calendar. We shared the calendar with the NTA for feedback, and one thing that was raised was the May day that's scheduled now on May 23rd as an early release. In the past has been a full day, a full professional development day, and it's been used for the purpose of class placement. Teachers work on instructional groupings in the morning, and in the afternoon, specialists, special education staff, their school counselors look at the list as well. Last year, it was changed to be a half-day of school because of the moving project, and because you didn't want to delay the end. So when we created the calendar, originally, we kept it as a half-day, but the NTA would like to consider going back to the historic full day for class placement that they've had.
Which would move the end, last day of school to the 17th?
To the 17th.
So, last year...
You amended the...
Memorial Day, did we amend it?
You amended it to a half-day because there were snow days and hurricane, and you didn't want to delay the close of school because of the move for Freeman Kennedy, but in the past, prior to that, it's been a full day.
Now, does that, how does that affect the teacher's contract with a...
Same number, the same number of days.
No, but does it affect the professional development? I mean, they...
We're adding a half-day.
We're adding a half-day of professional development.
No, it would be, it would be the same, because last year, they had an early release, and they used the afternoon for placement. So it's still a full workday for the teachers.
I guess as of right now, you had to schedule for a half-day development on 26th, now you've made that a full day, so in effect, you've added a second half of professional development. So isn't that...
No, because it's the, it's, the teachers worked a full day anyway, it was only a half-day for students. The teachers still were here that full day because they worked in placement in the afternoon.
Okay.
Right, but I guess we're going to be adding a day at the end, so, so, well, I guess, per their contract, how many...
You'll be adding a half-day for students on the end.
Right. But per their contract, how many days of professional development are they...
It's not, it's not defined in the contract, the number of professional development, the teacher workdays are defined.
Okay.
I'll have to, I'd have to get back to you on that.
I think it's 183 for teachers and then...
Right, so there's an additional three. Okay, so that's one. And then we have the original ones, okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to accept this calendar as revised by Dr. Delardi?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does school now end on the 17th?
Yeah.
And that will be a half-day?
Assuming...
Yeah, half-day.
Assuming no snow days?
Yes.
Assuming no snow days. That's a big assumption lately, but we'll hope for that.
So does that mean, that means the 16th isn't going to be a half-day anymore?
16th is not...
Six-day will be a full day, and the 17th will be a half-day.
And so the Friday before Memorial Day will be off for students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so...
26th is Memorial Day, I guess, right?
26th is Memorial Day, so it'll be a four-day weekend.
Four-day weekend.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimously. While we're on the subject of calendar, I would like to kind of bring up and just kind of get the committee's thoughts on this. Currently, the way the calendar's running with the snow days that we've had, including the ones in October, school is currently going to end on Friday, the 21st?
I don't have this in my calendar, but it's Friday.
On a Friday. I want to kind of talk about, and what we did last year, because we were bumping up to a similar thing, was on Good Friday, which is March 29th, I believe, possibly making that a half-day, if, in between now and our, you know, just kind of, you know, think about it, see if we like the idea, just so there's not, you know, if we have one more snow day between now and our next school committee meeting, we can add that in, and as opposed to having the last day of school being on a Monday. Thoughts?
Yeah, I honestly don't know any parents that I've talked to that thinks that coming back for a Monday or a Tuesday following a weekend to finish school is a good idea.
Right.
I did run that by the, the union briefly. We had to delay our monthly meeting, but just for preliminary thoughts, and people felt that if we had an additional snow day between now and March, it might make sense to add half-day so that the last day of school is not on a Monday. But I don't think you need to vote on that until March, because we'd still have time after the next school committee to revise the calendar and let people know.
So everyone liked that idea of... I guess, I guess my only worry about, you know, doing it on March 12th or March 13th is since it is a full day off, you know, if people are making plans for Easter weekend, going to...
Grandma's.
Driving to Grandma's, if they're planning on leaving on Thursday night, I guess I would want to try to get that out there, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna be kind of last-minute notice, I'd be a little...
Two weeks ahead of time. You know, I don't know if it's worth putting it out there, you know, just in a connect ad, that this is something that's being considered if there is an additional snow day.
Between now.
Between now and then, for this particular reason, so the last day of school isn't on a Monday, you know, with the graduation. What do you guys think about that?
More notice the better.
Yeah, the more notice the better.
So we could put it out tentatively, then still leave it to you to vote on in March?
Where's the sergeant-at-arms?
I'll take care of it. I'll have to riff on it.
Does that make sense, if we put it out tentatively to inform parents and let them vote on it?
Camera refocused, on the camera, dude, on the phone that was playing, okay, good.
Get your name earlier.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right. If you look at Exhibit 4, we have some past dues and past fees that we've had, this has been revised, right? You have the revised...
You have a copy of the revised.
Okay. So as of now, we have over $60,000 in fees that have not been paid, and these are people that have been called numerous times and have been sent numerous letters, and we still have, you know, $9,000 from 2011 available out there. So one of the things I wanted to, Dr. Delardi and I were kind of talking about is just kind of starting to play with the, you know, tweaking the policy on something like this, in so much as, you know, after three months, they're, you know, no longer allowed to participate in whatever, you know, once you're over three months in arrears without making a payment plan or any discussion, you're no longer allowed to participate, be it band, or kindergarten, or anything along those lines. And after six months of continuing to refuse to respond or set up a payment plan or things like that, is send it to collections.
Yeah.
And what I would, what I would propose to do is that we change our contracts to the collections, you know, set it up that, you know, I know we're having, we're struggling with the fines before, and instead of having fines be, you know, "Look, you're, you still owe us 100% plus you incur any collections expense."
Yeah.
Because, you know, a collections agency's got to run 15%, 20%, so if someone owes, you know, $3,000, now it's a substantial, you know, if it's six months and they refuse to return our phone calls, you know...
You have, tonight, we have a third reading of that policy, and we did add the statement at our last meeting that instead of charging a late fee, that after multiple notices, that the participation in tuition-based programs could be impacted. And I do think that if parents are notified after the third notice, and we're talking three to five months, that they need to contact the office to make a payment plan or to bring their account to balance, or the continued participation is in jeopardy. I think we'll get a lot of return for that, I think, I think it'll help us really close out a lot of these accounts. And again, we want to be sensitive to people that have financial need. If the parents contact us, I've already met with several parents after last notices went out, to develop an individual payment schedule, you know, that fits the family's circumstances, or to make them aware of financial aid that's available. But the problem is, is that we have, you know, we have bus fees that we're still trying to collect from last year, that, you know, the students ride the bus all year, and, and again, we've got $10,000 of fees outstanding from kindergarten tuitions for last year, so we're carrying a negative balance there. So in total, it's almost 70, or actually, with the revised one, it's almost about $60,000 of past-due accounts. So I just wanted you, before you read the third reading of the policy, to have a sense of the scope of the issue, and the amount of time that's going into trying to track down and contact parents with no response on that.
Do we know about how much is, like, the $9,000 about average for what we carry, carry over each year of being owed?
I didn't run the, I didn't run a long-term history on that, because the band fees and the bus fees are new, and the kindergarten tuition has been changed, so I'm not sure the history will give us, you know, much picture there.
Okay.
You know, Sean did mention the idea of adding collections. I'm not sure if we tell parents, you know, "You have a month to make an appointment, or your child's no longer eligible to ride the bus," that might be enough. We haven't had any sort of consequence for lack of payment in the past, so you might want to think about starting with that and then revisiting. I just wanted to make sure that the full committee knew the extent of the issue before you went to the third reading of that policy.
And the reason I like the collections is from the standpoint of, we spent, you know, Roxanne, we spent so much time chasing these people, by the time it's six months in, we've already made, you know, they've received, you know, six or seven letters, six or seven emails, you know, probably four or five phone calls, so the amount of labor we've already put into it, you know, I like just being, all right, once we get to that point, shift it off. I mean, if, you know, if you're literally not going to return any of our calls for six, you know, because it's not like we're horrendous about this, I mean, like, all right, you know, $100 a month, let us know what's going on...
Yeah.
...so we can do something, as long as they're making any good faith effort, you know, then there's, then there's no problem. And if anyone's in financial trouble, we have, you know, all the payment plans as well, you know, whereas, you know, we have, you know, 10 children who were in kindergarten who didn't pay, who are, who are now in first grade. You know, and we have, you know, we have kids that have, you know, didn't pay for the bus last year, and are riding the bus again this year, and not paying, you know, not paying for the bus again this year. And it's, it's just not fair to...
Some of this has been, I'm sorry, Thomas, go. Some of this has been addressed in the potential policy we're going with the third reading, that if you can't be any carryover, you can't be part of the bus next year, so some of this is already going to be addressed.
Yep.
So we're talking to all these folks, or multiple efforts have been made even for the folks for this year.
Yep.
They're a number of months behind.
Multiple notices.
I don't like the collections at all. I would feel more comfortable with if you get to the point where if you're unable to participate in, whether it be the band fee, the pre-K, kindergarten, whatever the case is, after X amount of time, then kind of where I think you're going, right, where you're not going to be part of this anymore. Now that, I think the collections, I get where you're going, and I understand there's a certain point where you have to be able to collect this money, I, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with that, and, but I also don't want to get to the point where yanking kids out of kindergarten because...
Right, we really don't want to do that.
That's, that's the last thing you want to do, and that's horrible for the child and any other, other children as well. So, I mean, the other one, you know, the band fee, the bus fees, everything like that, I'm a little less sympathetic to that. If you're unable to pay after X amount of time, then, all right, we're not riding the bus anymore, thanks.
And the kindergarten, with each, what we have done is with each past-due notice, we advise people that they may be eligible, if there is a financial need, they may be eligible for reduced tuition, or that they can contact to make a payment plan, so we're adding that to every reminder that goes out. So for kindergarten tuition, we're hoping if families are struggling, that they just follow up with an appointment, and we work something out. So we, you know, all they need to do to prevent termination of the program is contact the office and work out a plan.
Is that language in there right now, saying if you don't contact us...
It's in the proposed policy.
Okay, the proposed language would be, "If you don't contact us, your child will no longer be eligible to take part in whatever."
I think the policy reads that their participation, that's a potential...
Jeopardizes their participation?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would tend to believe that would rattle most people's cages enough, and if they have, if there's an issue there, then there's avenues in which they can work around that, it's not like we're trying to...
And we could also try that, you know, on the third reading of the policy, we could try that this year, and I could give you a report at the end of the year of where we are, and you could consider adding...
Yeah, I may be alone in that. I'd rather us go that as opposed to going all out with, I don't know, I just...
Well, I guess, I guess my problem with the collection, I mean, the reason I like the collections from the standpoint of, I know how much time and effort and angst it causes central office staff, plus, you know, if someone's, you know, "All right, I won't pay my last three months of kindergarten, and what are you going to do, not let me go back to kindergarten next year?"
No, they can't be part of any other...
Any other tuition-based program the following year, so bus band.
I think, I think your other, I mean, if you want to put a lien on, you could look into that avenue, put a lien on real estate taxes or something.
You can't. Already looked into that. That was an easy one.
We can prevent people from being able to, you know, if you have an unpaid preschool balance, you can't register for full-day kindergarten.
Yeah.
Or SAC, or for band, or for any other tuition-based program until, again, you've worked out either a payment plan or brought your balance.
The one advantage I see to the collections, well, two advantages, rather, I see, one is, it'll, it hopefully will get people to pay, but also, it takes the duty of chasing them for the payment away from our staff, and we can free them up to do other things that need to get done while we have the collections people doing the chasing, and then whatever they charge, like Sean said, we tack that on to the bill, the parent pays that, we're not out-of-pocket a dime for the collections, and we get 100% return on what...
You get a percent.
You get, no, they pay, I work with collections people all the time, you get, they take their fee out of it, and their recovery rate is very low.
Well, and that's what I said, though, but you, if you create their policy that they have to pay the recovery fee.
Right.
But their actual recovery fee is, fee is, or I'm sorry, the recovery success rate is very low. We work, believe me, we work with them all the time, they recover about 15% and 20% of this, people just don't care. So I think you're, I mean, you're in effect writing this money off, I mean, I don't think your rate of collection is going to improve that much from this, I think you're, we might be better served what your suggestions are, as far as really kind of tweaking the language, tweaking the policy such that there's a little more teeth to it, and that you can't be part of the band in fourth grade because you still owe a pre-K fee from whatever the math of that would be, five...
What if we do this as...
And the policy also speaks to that, the proposed policy speaks to that, not just for that child, but for any child in that family.
Right.
So if there's an unpaid balance with the family, then no children in that family can enroll in tuition-based programs the following year. That's the way the policy reads it.
See, I wouldn't mind at least giving the collections thing, maybe we can give it a shot for a year, you know?
It's a mess.
And...
I've seen too many people get...
One at a time.
You know, and we give it a shot, because there's no harm in trying. We try it, it doesn't work, then we know, hey, it doesn't work, we can try something else. But if it works, if there's a good success, then maybe we stay with it. But, you know, if we give it a shot for a year, give it a shot for one school year, or one, one calendar year, and say, "Does it work? Is it going to work for us?" With my family's business, we've sent people to collections for unpaid balances on clothes, and we've actually had a good return on getting that stuff paid for. The exact amount, I don't know off the top of my head, because I don't have all the figures. I didn't know we were going to be talking about this. But, you know, you know, even the threat of sending them to collections has gotten a lot of customers to pay, you know?
Jeff?
Thomas made some good points. I mean, I've just seen too many people in my business alone, in collections, it really, it really screws up a person's life. I don't want to be going that far. I understand that we have to take measures, I don't know if that's the measure we want to take.
Well, collections is the final step.
I've seen, I've seen people's lives ruined because of collections, because collection companies are paid and don't resolve getting it removed from their credit for years. I've had people, you know, collections, $10, $15, can't get a mortgage, can't get an auto, can't...
Well, this isn't reporting it to a collections agency, this is using a collections firm, so that's different.
It can still get there, but it is one and the same, that's the problem. It can get to that point, and you don't want to have a situation where someone is, you know, reported to a collecting agency, where we didn't want to go to that measure, and it happened, and now we have to deal with that mess.
Well, the way to get around that, maybe, I know for us, when we do the collections and stuff, it's our lawyer that does it. Our lawyer's the one that writes the, does all the paperwork, sends the letters, sends all the notices, you know? Why don't we talk to the, the school's lawyer, see if that's something that he's capable of doing, rather than, like he said, because, rather than sending it to an agency? You know, if we have the lawyer who's already working for the school, you know, obviously, if we do this, he's going to have to get paid to, you know, like we said, the fee, but the lawyer isn't going to be the one reporting stuff to the credit bureau, so it's not going to go against their credit. You know, his job is just the legal aspect of getting us the money that we're owed.
It might be, you know, it might be worth trying this, this next step, where we're advising people about their ability to participate in paid programs, or to remain in the programs, and have me give you an updated report in maybe May, or to see where we're at, because if that, in effect, narrows it to small numbers, then it may not be necessary, and if it doesn't, then you may want to reconsider. You know, we have, right now, we've done nothing, so except say, "Please, please pay us, please pay us." So I'm thinking maybe by doing this, and in the last round of letters we sent out, we just, we did put a line in that says, you know, you may, continued participation may be impacted, and we did get some immediate calls right after. So it might be something to think about, you know, trying this, and then I can update you of the status of unpaid balances in May, and then you can revisit that if you want to.
Do we know how many of the people who owe a balance from kindergarten are right now participating in other paid activities, other than, say, the bus fees? Like if they're in band, or if they're in...
Well, they wouldn't be in band, because they'd only be in first grade.
But they might have family members in band.
Oh, that's true.
I could get you that information. You can see that from the first exhibit that we had, that was in your packet, it went down by 9,000, and that was after the last round of letters went out, which said...
That's an adjustment to the language.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I've heard everybody's comments, and the idea of a collection, perhaps we can just write in the policy that we may use that as a tool, not that we're going to, but possibly use that to clear out the balances at the end of the, at the end of the term, and have a tiered structure where first notice is 30 days, or, you know, the language saying, "This is what's going to happen after 60 days, this is what's going to happen after 90 days, your kid won't be able to participate, and after 120 days, we reserve the right to..."
You could put that in the policy.
Yeah, so someone that, you know, we've been tracing, you know, because that's, you know, that's frustrating for me, is that we have 18 people we've been chasing for over a year.
Oh, I agree.
You know, and it's $10,000, and, and let's face it, we don't have the money.
It's a tough decision by all means. I absolutely agree with what you just said, I mean, just to be able to structure it in such a way so that it couldn't be any clearer, this is the steps we're going to take during this period, during this period, and as much as we don't want to approach the collection idea...
You could leave it as a possible, I mean, the way the policy's worded is very open, it says possible consequences, so you could leave it open, as Kelly's suggesting, and then I could present in May, and you could determine at that point what you want to do for policy.
Kelly's idea, I mean, the clarity of it should be helpful. Kelly's idea, I mean, the clarity of it should be helpful.
Yeah, and the other thing, just in addition to Kelly's, you know, just from like what Thomas was saying, with the cost of collections, you know, I would love to see that, you know, if eventually we get to that point, you know, I'm fine with doing it at a phase, you know, let's do phase one, and if it's not working, then we can make it, put in more teeth, you know, but put it into the contracts now where people are signing, you know, I'm signing up for, you know, for, you know, pre-K, and I'm gonna pay $7,500. You know, I don't want the collection agency to take, you know, get the low-hanging fruit and take 25%, you know, it's, you know, whereas if they have to, if they have to pay the 25%, then we're not, you know, it's no harm, no foul. If they collect something, great, we get 100% of ours back, if they don't, then, you know, so be it.
Yeah, just, I think we'll have to revisit that policy for sure, but just a couple passing thoughts is that the cost of collection, we can roll that into the penalty.
Right.
Saying that there's an addition to that, and I would also like to see in there that any balance paid, not paid by the end of the school term is subject to collection, because I don't think anybody places that over the summer, right?
We continue to send letters out.
You do, you do, okay.
Yeah.
How many, I'm curious on the process of it, as crazy as it may sound, how many letters do we actually send out?
For each balance, many. You probably can answer that better.
We send out a couple of connect ads reminding people, then we make phone calls reminding people, and then we send an actual letter, and then we actually send the letter.
The second letter.
The second letter.
So on average, you say maybe what, three or four emails, and then five letters?
Well, it's three letters, because I think the third letter is usually said, certified mail.
Yeah.
Do we know how much?
And phone calls in the interns.
Right, yeah, so there's probably 10 contacts.
Do we know how much in unpaid fees we end up writing off, as in, we're not gonna get this?
I mean, that's what's on your exhibit there, as of last year, there were $11,240 worth of.
At some point where we just, the school acknowledges, this isn't gonna get paid, and it's just.
I don't know.
Because so many of these fees are new, I can't speak to that.
I don't think we ever addressed this in the past either.
Yeah.
So that would be a Todd question.
Yeah, but again, band fees and bus fees have only been.
In 90 days, it's written off, I mean, so it is a bad debt at that point, but, I mean, I don't think we would ever not collect it should someone want to suddenly pay their bus fee from last year.
Yeah, but do we still, do we still chase three years later, is what I think?
I would doubt it.
Yeah.
I think once it's written off as a bad debt, I don't think you actively would work it anymore. I mean, it's just you're gonna concentrate on your ongoing ones that aren't in bad debt situation yet, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the school has a balance sheet per se. I mean, it's a budget that we're really driving towards, so.
Yeah.
The one thing you could do is add a contingency for unpaid fees in the budget. We're lucky getting that passed, but.
Right. Okay, all right. Oh, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't, I'm sorry. Pre-K and kindergarten votes, Exhibit 5. We just wanted to kind of put these on right now because enrollment for kindergarten and pre-K are up right now. These are not changing from last year.
That's good.
These are all staying, staying flat from last year, but since people are applying, we wanted to be able to give them an actual number, and we can still, once we finish the budget review, all the other fees. So kindergarten tuition would be $3,600 for the full day, and then the preschool is three-year-olds 180, four-year-olds 240, three-year-olds 420, four-year-olds 420, those are the extended half-days, and the TK program at 720 per month. And these all got cleared by, our numbers are fine, okay? Because we had a number, we were worried that our fees were too high based on the numbers, but they, it was an accounting error.
We've been at 36 for, this will be the second year, we're at 36 for the kindergarten.
Yeah, we're recommending not.
35.
Yeah, not going up in the kindergarten tuition. We did get some feedback from the Department of Ed that when you're applying for the full-day tuition, full-day kindergarten grant, that they don't want you to carry a large balance in the revolving account, so that the tuition should just offset operating costs. There was some question as to whether we had too much money in the account, but the issue was that we have a lot of parents that would prepay their deposits for kindergarten prior to the end of the fiscal year, so it looks like there's a balance, whereas really it's money parents are prepaying for their next year's tuition.
So you spoke to them before, actually helped us out.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But, so, we're okay with that, but I would recommend keeping it where it is and not raising the tuition.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept these fees?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five, reserved parking signs.
I don't have Exhibit 5.
There's no exhibit.
Okay.
Exhibit 5 was what you were just looking at.
Oh, that's right, I have that one.
Number, number five is reserved parking signs. Right now, it's, I realize this is my own pet peeve, but I've gotten enough calls from other parents that it's their pet peeve as well. Right now, in front of Freeman Kennedy, the front row is reserved for visitor parking, and that's currently been, it's, you know, no matter what time you get here, it's being taken up by the, by the staff first thing in the morning. So, you know, parents are, you know, if they're coming in for lunch duty or having to park all the way over, especially on a rainy and snowy day, they're parking all the way over, you know, over by the ballfields and having to trudge on over, and so there's basically no reserved parking for parents that are coming in to help out. And so, you know, we talked about addressing that, but as we were talking about it, Dr. Allardyce said, you know, it's like, it's tougher, especially for like Lisa, who has to literally run out 50 times during the day, and I suggested, I'm like, well, you know, I would think that we could have a couple reserved parking spaces for the superintendent and the principal right up front in addition to the parent things, because those are the people that are constantly going back and forth between the two schools and up to Town Hall and things along those lines. And I know over at HOD, we have the, you know, the sped director, since her office is over there, and then also the principal have a couple reserved spots over there as well. So I wanted to see about proposing, you know, taking away two of the parent visitor parking.
They could even be on the left, they could even be not in that front row, but, you know, on the.
Yeah, well, as I say, I think.
Wherever, I just.
I mean, I think, I think right now, I think there's 11 parent parking spaces, and that seems high. I don't mind taking away, you know, a couple of those for, you know, the principal and the superintendent, you know, I think nine things, and then I guess the other thing is we just kind of address the staff saying, listen, these are reserved spots for visitors, not for, you know, you know, those aren't staff parking spaces. I mean, these, you know, these people are coming in and volunteering during the day, they shouldn't, they shouldn't happen to be walking three miles, so. Thoughts, conversation?
As far as the signs go, I know right now we're working on a tight budget, you know, and I do support the idea of them having their own space. Do we know about what the signs cost? Does, can the town make the signs?
Yeah, DPW.
Okay.
Yeah, has them.
All right, so in that case.
It would be nominal, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
We have, we have four prisons in town, I'm sure we can give assignments.
I thought they made license plates.
Yeah, we can get a license plate type sign. You can only have seven characters on your sign. We'll get one that says Ingrid. Okay, is there a motion to?
Can we actually do a motion for that?
No, I guess we really don't, do we?
I mean, it's.
No?
I mean, we can if we want, I just don't know if we actually need one.
Yeah, I guess we don't need one, no. So, so can we, can we get, make that happen, Pam? Awesome. Pam does it all, exactly.
Pam, you put them up, right?
This weekend. Okay, so that's all I have, so.
Okay.
Dr. Allardyce.
All right, well, I have quite a few things tonight. So per policy, I am asked to give this school committee a quarterly bullying report, so I just need to report to you, at this time, to this point in the year, we have had one identified and investigated incident of bullying at the Freeman Kennedy Upper Elementary School. It was investigated by the principal, appropriate disciplinary action has been taken, and they worked with both families in the situation to resolve it. It was not a situation that was turned over to the police, and so there was a single incident to date. The second thing on the agenda is an update on school safety. I wanted to let everybody know that we did have an outside consultant, John LaFond, who is a parent of students at both the HOD and at Freeman Kennedy, but also has expertise in the school, actually, the security field in general, has done some work with Virginia Tech after the shootings that took place there, and has also worked with the New York City Fire and Police Departments in looking at security measures. He volunteered to come do an outside security audit of the schools. We did have both of them scheduled for last week. He came on Tuesday and did a walkthrough with Lisa Altham, actually, no, she was unable to, she was at six, so he walked through the building with myself, with Chief Stone and Officer Glenn Eichel, Mark joined us as well, and he gave us some feedback and some recommendations for things that we might want to consider discussing for the Freeman Kennedy. We were scheduled to look at the HOD on Friday, but due to the storm, we are rescheduling that and hope to do that sometime this week, but possibly the week after vacation, it's contingent on his travel schedule. I think the specific recommendations for improvement would be really best discussed as a matter of executive session. There might be some things that we can share out with the public once we make decisions. Some of them are really internal security measures that should be kept confidential to protect the safety of the students. So that's where we are in that process. He is gonna put together a report to bring to the committee so that you can see what the recommendations are for both sites, and we will, you know, move forward from there.
I did take some notes, so if you guys want to see what I wrote down, if you can read my hieroglyphics, my chicken scratch, then I'm more than welcome, I'm more than happy to share what I wrote down with you guys.
And obviously, we will do, have his report in executive session, because we don't want to lay out on the camera everything that we're doing for security for the schools, so.
Right. But obviously, anything that is general information, we'll share out with the public in a report in March. All right. The third thing on the agenda is that at the beginning of the school year, actually, it was when I first came on in July, the committee graciously agreed to allow me to delay establishing district-wide goals for the first part of the year, so that I could really spend some time learning much more about the system, getting a better feel for what the strengths and weaknesses and what our challenges are, where we had opportunities for growth, and tonight I wanted to share back with you the results of that entry report and the findings. For anybody in the audience, there is copies of the PowerPoint, so if you need them. So, let's see if I can make our technology work. Maybe not. Yep. I'm gonna have to probably. Okay, so, as part of the entry process, I just wanted to give you a sense of where I collected the data from. It began in September and October with really extensive interviews. Some of the questions that I asked during the interview process are really what are the strengths of the district, what do you think should be preserved and protected at all costs, what are some challenges, what are some opportunities. I met with all the town department heads, so the town manager, the director of the library, I met with the chief, the fire chief and the police chief, and a variety of other people. Individual interviews with all the school committee members, administrators, I had individual interviews with parents as well as focus group interviews, met with teachers, community members, members, senior citizens, assistant teachers, food service, custodial staff. So the interview data was the first part. The second was document review, so I looked at the MCAS achievement data over time, we looked at the budget history over the last five to eight years, teacher and administrative evaluations. We did have several outside audits of the district. We had a mid-cycle review, which looks at the special education programming, that was conducted by DESI, as well as an outside audit from the Futures Health Corporation that looked at specialized programming. I've reviewed past school improvement plans, demographic data for the district, and contracts. In order to make the bulk of information that I collected manageable and useful for the committee as well as the district, I did organize it into the four categories. These four categories are the same that the model system for superintendent evaluation as well as teacher evaluation that was put out by the Department of Ed. So instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Under each of these, what I've done is give you some general theme statements, so I tried to take all of that data and look at what are some of the patterns, so I'll give you a general theme, and then the, some of the strengths and some opportunities that we have. At this point, this, the data is reported just as sort of a state of the state, what, where are we currently? Not making recommendations at this point of what we should be, you know, focusing on or how we're gonna shape the goals, that'll be the next step. So this is just a state of the state of what we have currently. Okay, and instructional leadership. Educational leaders, this is the theme, in the district work hard and are passionate about the work they do. The administrative team is supportive of each other and willing to work together, but they haven't had the opportunity, particularly in the last three to five years, to collaborate around key educational issues and really develop a strong sense of teamwork across district and a shared sense of purpose. Some of the strengths are that there are positive working relationships among the administrative team, there is a clear focus on student learning and achievement, and we have a very efficient use of central office staff. The central office staffing here is more limited than in many other districts, but you have people that are cross-trained, that fill multiple roles, there's a lot of flexibility in there. We have a business consultant that's part-time, who works with our business administrative assistant, and so it's a very efficient use of the limited resource we have. Challenges and opportunities. Currently, the district does not have clearly articulated goals or a current strategic plan. There was a strategic planning process started a couple of years ago, but it was not seen through fruition. There has been a large turnover in key leadership positions, which means that some of the procedural things and some of the initiatives have not been completed, and there has been a lack of professional development provided by the district for administrators and leadership roles. Other than what people have pursued independently, there hasn't been focused professional development efforts there.
Ingrid, was the plan Benton did, was that usable at all?
The plan, pieces of it, they got to the point of writing the visions, the mission statement, a proposed vision that was not completed and approved. A lot of the work in the strategic plan is similar to what the entry findings, they were really looking at what are the strengths and weaknesses, but some of those things have changed, so I think this is more current. So.
Okay.
Pieces of the data are usable, the mission statement's been adopted, but no, there hasn't been.
Okay.
The rest hasn't been developed.
Okay.
Okay, another thing within governance, another theme, there's an atmosphere of guarded optimism in the district. Members of the school community are invested in having a voice and helping shape the direction the school system takes. However, over the past few years, not all stakeholders felt valued, and there's an interest in changing that culture. So that universally came from both parent perspective as well as interviews with teachers and administrators. Strengths, there is strong communication from the schools to the community, parents reported this as a strength, the newsletters, blogs, connect ed, there's a lot of information that goes out. There is a positive collaborative relationship between the NTA, Norfolk Teachers Association, and the administration, and we were successful in negotiating the new teacher evaluation process. That's really a tribute to the NTA and to the work that's been done. We were one of the first districts that had a ratified signed agreement, we've moved forward with that in a really positive direction, so that's definitely a strength. Challenges, the district budget for professional development has been decreased by $30,000 over the last five years. We do not, as a district, provide professional development for paraprofessional staff, so all of our teacher assistants, they do not work per contract on the professional development days, so they're not able to participate in the Go Math training or any other things that we're running. That's a really critical issue, because those are the people that are providing instructional support to some of our most at-risk learners, and they don't have that opportunity. And then we have a lack of avenues for two-way communication. So while the schools are really strong at sending out information, we don't have really good forums in place for parents to contribute their input, to share feedback on what's working and what's not working well, so we don't have a good way of collecting perspective data at the current time. Another thing, as far as governance, school committee members take their role seriously and are committed to developing and supporting an outstanding educational program for all children. Keeping the committee better informed of curriculum and instructional needs as well as achievement results is critical to allowing them to govern effectively moving forward. Some of the strengths, all members of the school committee have completed the state charting course training, three members of the committee have served in the roles for multiple years, and school committees' meetings overall run smoothly and policies are kept up to date. Another challenges and opportunities, there is an opportunity for us to increase the focus on curriculum and instruction during school committee meetings, and that's another avenue to get information out to the community, because they're televised and it gets data out, you know, another way to get information out. In your packets with a full entry report, there's a lot more detail to all these data points, I'm just trying to highlight the key things. All right, standards and curriculum. Theme statement, the district does not have a tightly defined written curriculum that ensures consistency within the instructional program for all students. While teachers all follow the state frameworks and standards and share common teaching practices, While teachers all follow the state frameworks and standards and share common teaching practices, there is considerable variation within the instructional core. Some strengths with curriculum instruction, we did have the addition of halftime curriculum directors who are working towards developing that written curriculum. We have published learning expectation documents for all content areas, K to six. We've had a lot of strong training in skill development and literacy instruction for our staff. The adoption of the Go Math program is really ahead of the curve, is fully aligned with the Common Core standards and a rigorous program. School committee adopted a formal curriculum review cycle back in October, so we have a plan moving forward for looking at each content area annually, and we have rich technology Some challenges, report card revision is desperately needed. The last report card revision, there was a process started three years ago to take a look at that, but the report cards were never revised. So, the last revision was twenty, over 20 years ago. So, the report cards do not reflect the current Common Core learning standards. We also have the opportunity in that report card revision to develop report cards that are electronic so that parents might have more continued access to information about their students' progress. We have to develop clear proficiency benchmarks and expectations by grade level and content area. So, once the curriculum is, is well in place, we need to know what does a proficient reader at grade one look like mid in January? What are our expectations going forward? There's an opportunity to increase the volume of nonfiction writing required of students and to revisit and reevaluate the district's written language curriculum. Student achievement, the district does have high expectations for most students in a culture of strong academic achievement as well as a commitment to educating the whole Some of the strengths, our students perform well on the MCAS, we're in the top 90% of school districts serving a similar age range of children, we're consistently above the state average on MCAS, we have a strong award-winning band program, and a very well-developed social-emotional learning curriculum. Some challenges, student scores on the open response items, and we've talked about this at committee meetings before, those are the open-ended written response, are a relative area of weakness for the district. We do have an achievement gap between special education and the aggregate student population, ranges from 27 to 42%, and that's over all four grade levels tested and, and different subject areas, both ELA, math, and science. There's definitely an opportunity for the district to review the rigor of some of our remedial instructional programs and to, to look at how well those are aligned with the Common Core standards. Instruction, the teaching staff in Norfolk is highly committed and a dedicated group of professionals who take great pride in the school community, and positive working relationships among staff are valued. Strengths, we have a very experienced teaching staff. We have very low turnover. I think in the general ed program, it's in your report, but I'm pretty sure that the average number of years of experience is 10. For special education, it's five. So, it's a veteran teaching staff. Parents report pretty universally in the interviews that I did that the quality of teaching and relationships with teachers is a big area of strength. The district has been able to maintain in tight budget times small class sizes. We do have, which is very rare in this area, full-time building substitutes who are certified licensed teachers and knowledgeable about our local curriculum, who can cover classrooms when needed, and we do have clear rules and expectations for student conduct. Some challenging, challenges, our mentor, our district mentoring program, which is a program of providing support for, for new teachers in their first couple of years of practice, could definitely be strengthened. One of the challenges is we don't have a lot of new hires, there's not a lot of turnover. So, you have one or two teachers. There is a potential to partner with other area districts, with Rantham and Plainville, to be able to provide a more intensive course of support and study for, for new teachers. We do have a district-wide need for additional professional development and differentiating instruction, and that's to meet the range of needs of learners in the classroom. We do, and this is again universally reported by both parents and teachers, the district has a lack of resources currently for enrichment and challenge outside the general education curriculum. So, to provide extension learning opportunities for kids that come in who have a strong skill set within the grade level and are ready to take on more, more challenging work. We do, through the new teacher evaluation tool, have an opportunity to be able to provide more effective feedback and support to educators. That's an opportunity. Special education department provides individual instruction and services to students that meet their needs. At the same time, the alignment between the remedial programs and the general education curriculum is inconsistent, so there is some gaps there between those two. Parents report confidence in the quality and volume of services provided to students, and the district has developed recently some very strong specialized programs that allow us to provide services to students with significant needs within the district. So, there is a budget impact there. We have a new program in the preschool that's really designed to meet the needs of students on the autism spectrum, provide more intensive speech and language services and programming. We have the best in the SEALS program, which provide therapeutic support to students who have social-emotional learning needs, who, or who may be on the autism spectrum at the older grade levels. Again, we have an experienced special education teaching staff. Over the past five years, we've significantly reduced the number of students identified as requiring special education services. It went from about 21% five years ago down to much more comparable with state averages, about 16%. We do have a very strong social thinking curriculum, which is, a lot of districts are in the process of looking at, but that's really a program designed to teach social skills to students that have a disability in that area. And we also have rich resources for assistive technology. Challenges and opportunities, we have an opportunity to start sharing the supervision and evaluation responsibilities between regular and special education. Currently, the special education director does all the supervision and evaluation for special education staff. The building principals do all the supervision and valuation for regular education. So, bringing those two things together will allow people to get much richer feedback from multiple sources and lenses. Continuing to develop the strong internal programs to meet the special, specialized needs of students allows, one, for students to remain in their home district as long as possible, and it also has a budgetary impact of us not needing to send students out and being able to provide appropriate programming internally. Another area that we need to look at is developing guidelines and practices for determining when a student requires additional adult assistance from a paraprofessional, as well as determining when the child's made sufficient progress so that that's no longer needed. So, that's a budget piece as well. Management and operations, residents of Norfolk get a good return on their financial investment in the schools. The district has a moderate per pupil spending rate compared to other comparable districts, yet produces higher student achievement results. That data's in your packet as well, so that you can look at how our per pupil spending compares to other area districts as well as the achievement results. Again, strengths, moderate per pupil, lower than state average, facilities are in great condition, Freeman Kennedy's in great condition, HOD is in good condition. There's some things that we're going to need to address over the next few years in terms of, from a facility side there. We have the advantage for a one-time technology purchase through the building project, so that should have a very positive budget impact. We're not going to be replacing computers, technology at Freeman Kennedy for the next five years, most likely. And with the new building, we have energy-efficient heating and water systems, which should reduce some of our maintenance and annual costs. Some opportunities, Freeman Kennedy currently does have some unused classroom space. There's a potential to rent that out, too. We've, we've talked to some local universities like Leslie that have off-site graduate programs. So, there's a potential revenue there as well as to collaborative placements like BIKO or the Reed's Collaborative. There is an opportunity for us to create more transparency in the budget process. That came through in a lot of the interviews with other community town departments, as well as the senior center, who want more outreach and a better, better sense of where the schools are allocating funds and what the schools' needs are. Another theme, fiscal resources in Norfolk are tight, and the district does have a limited capacity to absorb additional budget cuts without compromising the quality of education. There is information in your packet, the, you know, the budget over the last several years has remained flat or been decreased, so, so it's tight. Strengths, the SAC program is financially self-sufficient and a great resource, well utilized by the community, and we do have strong working relationships with the town that has allowed us to offset some costs. So, through sharing resources, we have a shared technology director, there's an energy agreement here currently, so that's a strength. Challenges, declining enrollment. Over the past four years, we've lost 145 students. The overall district budget has remained flat or decreased over the past five years, which has resulted in position and program cuts. So, foreign language program, health wellness program, and many classroom positions. Town does not have a commercial tax base to help, to help offset some of those budgetary constraints. Our food service program is operating at a deficit. We're subsidizing that by about $30,000 to $40,000 annually, and we had to, we got to a position where we had to add fees for band and bus to continue to run those. Family and community engagement, families and community members take great pride in the school system and the small-town personalized educational experience they perceive the town offers. Some strengths, we have the NEST group that does a lot of fundraising, about $6,000 last year, and awards grants to teachers to fund special projects. We have partnerships with the recreation department, through, through the rec department this year. We're offering a bunch of after-school programs. We have the stock market exchange, a foreign language program, school councils that are actively involved. The parent advisory council for special ed is growing with increased membership. We started this year a parent leadership group, which will meet monthly. That's another way to try to collect that, to, that two-way communication so that we can collect feedback and, and hear parents' voices about concerns in the schools. Districts provided a variety of parent seminars, Open Circle, Anti-Bullying, and has strong art and music programs that the community attends. Challenges, increasing participation in NEST is, is, has been a challenge, but if we can get people more actively involved, that could be an additional revenue source. There's a need to create more opportunities for parent involvement at the Freeman Kennedy and for parents to feel welcome and part of that community. Reactivating participation in the senior tax credit program is another thing that we're looking at. We do have, we started that this year. We do have a number of senior volunteers that are providing support, clerical tutoring support, things like that at the schools. And the possibility of partnering with Rantham and Plainville to increase programming for both parents and students outside the school day. And the last is professional culture. Professional growth and learning are valued by individuals within the district, but the district has not made the development of a strong professional culture where all members of the community regularly engage in learning, collaborative, and innovation a high priority over the last three to five years. Strengths, we have LSDO and CESP that offer onsite professional development at low cost. We have several student teachers from local universities, which is a great learning opportunity for both the student teachers as well as for the mentor staff. And again, we have a positive collaborative relationship with the NTA. Challenges, we have limited time in the current calendar for professional development for teachers. There's limited time for collaboration and co-planning. There has been a lack of professional development for administrators, and there's been a lack of differentiation in professional development offerings. So, we're not tiering our offerings to meet the range of needs of teachers. So, next steps, all of the data that's in your packet will be, I'll be taking back to the district leadership team. We will be further analyzing all of the findings and identifying some priority areas of focus for improvement. With, as part of that, we'll do a root cause analysis, so we're going to try to dig deeper in some of our, for example, if we want to look at the special education achievement gap, we're going to try to figure out what are the root causes of that gap so that we can inform our strategy. We'll be proposing district improvement goals to the school committee, and once you adopt those, we can move forward with developing a strategic action plan to address the most critical areas of need. And then finally, the goal of all of the work is to help the Norfolk schools realize their mission, and again, as Sean read it at the beginning of the meeting, "offering a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of the, of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of the ever-changing world." All right. So, I can take any questions.
I just got a couple of things.
Sure.
As far as the data collection from the parents. I'm sure we could update the school's website so that they can actually send questions or stuff, and it can be forwarded not only to you, but maybe even if it's something that could, that we have to address as the committee, it can be forwarded to us as well. Also, you know, social media is a big thing right now, you know, that's another idea. Or also, I want to encourage all parents, you know, you can, to come to the school committee meetings. You know, you can address us at the meetings, and we can bring up these topics, and we can try to do what we can, you know? Also, as for the report cards, who is responsible for revising the report cards? Is that something that...
That would be a committee, that we would put it together, of representatives from the grade level to take a look at the Common Core standards and make those recommendations.
So, that's something on you, the principal and the teachers, right?
Yep.
All right.
You might want to collaborate with King Philip on the existing system needs.
Mm-hmm, they do.
And, yeah, I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Any other questions? That was easy, Tom.
All right. And there is a, like I said, there's a lot more of the backup data in the full report.
Just on the website?
It's not yet. I wanted to present it to you, but I can certainly put it up on the website once you've had a chance.
Yeah, as I say, everybody has a chance to be through to greater length, so that's good.
Okay.
Committee reports, all right, NEST, as Dr. Allardyce said, still looking for members. We actually had to postpone our last meeting because of a snowstorm, so therefore, that's got bumped, so I have nothing new to report. Kelly, budget?
I really didn't prepare anything today. I know that Dr. Allardyce put together a fairly firm level services budget that we'll review after the meeting tonight and then discuss next steps on how we approach the town with that budget.
Right, and next, and next month's the public budget hearing, right?
Hopefully, yep. We're going to set, we're going to finalize timelines at the subcommittee tonight, but last year, it was done in March.
In March, so.
Okay.
So, hopefully, you know, that's, that's what I think we had an original agenda, so that way, that, that is a time when, for those of you out in the, out in the public, can, you know, ask back and forth questions because it's more of a hearing as opposed to a meeting, so. King Philip?
Our last meeting consisted of, the superintendents proposed our very budget presentation. The meeting before that, we actually heard from the technology director as well as the things that were being proposed. There were a lot of things that they want to implement, which I think are probably necessary at the time. If anyone's interested in having any reports, they'd be happy to provide it to you as well. Also, last night, I attended Rantham Town Government Study Committee, which was organized about six months ago. It's essentially, it's a way of overseeing what's happening in town to find out if a better way of doing it.
Okay. Any, any movement on the union negotiation at KP?
Still involved.
Have they met?
Have they met yet?
Been going back and forth for things. Right now, one of the proposals we're having is, they're having a meeting tonight, which I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but essentially has to do with putting the union in a position, we, we have to implement the health budget, the cost savings.
Right.
And it's, we've gone several plus months with them not making a decision, essentially putting us in a position to make the decision for them. For us to do that, we have to actually implement the statute, which in that case would then force them to choose a decision.
So, now, I know they publicly said that they, in order to level service, they need like 3.3 million. How is that number that far out of whack? I mean, that's, that's like a 10% increase to stay level. I mean, they're, they're, the teacher's contract's not going up by 10%. They're, you know, all the other, I mean, all of our costs are going up 2 and 1/2 to 3%. I don't know, understand how their costs are all going up.
Additional 7%.
Yeah, yeah, an additional 7%. I mean, it's not, Rantham's not that different than Norfolk.
I mean, we're trying to compile information from the separate towns as well to try and give them a better understanding of where we're coming from, and it's just not moving.
Is it gamesmanship, or is it...
I know in the past that they, they used 700,000 from their E&amp;D funds to, to supplement the budget to keep positions, and I know those funds are not available this year. So, they've lost 700,000.
Essentially, we've had money we've had to draw from those specific accounts that are typically used for other things. We haven't had a choice but to draw from.
They had to use, I believe, the E&amp;D funds for septic work last year, so that, that is an fund that they can, so they've lost that in addition to some other funding sources.
Because they had a brand-new septic system that they didn't have bonded?
I'm not sure about that, but I just know that the E&amp;D funds are no longer available.
We're also in the process of Unit C, which is secretaries, so we're negotiating that as well as finishing negotiations for the superintendent.
Okay. But, but have, has, has the teachers' union sat down with the, the union, the, the team yet?
We've sat down with them a couple times.
Oh, okay.
I think last month, there hadn't even been a sit-down, am I correct?
Right, right.
It's, it's not moved as expeditiously as we wanted to.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully, we'll have something new and improved next time.
All right, while you, while, while we're on you, we'll change your name from King Philip to Technology Subcommittee.
We, we had our first meeting, which is essentially to set up the ground rules.
Okay.
Which is great, and, you know, put into play what our mission is going to be.
Okay.
Our next meeting's going to be on Thursday.
Okay. Mark, Policy Subcommittee, we have three readings.
We have three readings. Also, we had pretty much finished the Corey policy, but then the state decided that they were going to throw us a curveball and change their Corey policy.
Right.
And so, now we have to redo the Corey policy.
Okay.
So, nothing like doing a whole bunch of work to do a whole bunch of work. So, the first one, we have a first reading on the community use of school facility and resources.
I can speak to that one a little bit, and I don't know, is it possible to waive three readings on this by vote? Is that... Is that...
Excuse me?
Okay, it's possible to waive doing three readings on this policy.
Well, this is the third policy anyways, right?
This is the first reading on the community use. What's changed in this is really just the liability statement, and I had our attorney take a look at the, the release of responsibility for school, for renting out the building. The form that you're currently using, if an outside agency, say Boy Scouts or Basketball wants to rent the building, they have a liability statement that somebody signs with the rental saying that they, they basically hold the school harmless. Problem is, the way the current form is structured, they're signing as an individual and not as a representative of that group. So you're only releasing liability for the one person who signed. Everybody else attending that event is not covered by that.
Right.
Right, so the attorneys are recommending that we change that language and that basically that they have to sign, that they're authorized to sign for that group, and that they're taking responsibility for that organization using the space. So he, the only things that are changed on this is the language for the school use release, and then he's also recommending, and you can see that in the strikeouts, that we add a parent permission acknowledgement form that goes home. So if KP Basketball wants to rent the space, that group should be sending home a permission slip, letting parents know that it's not a school-sponsored or school-supervised activity. So just to make sure that they're aware that, you know, because it's housed here, we're not responsible for supervising the behavior of students or the events that take place. It's the responsibility of the agency renting the building.
And in the case if someone gets hurt, it's not coming back on us, it's going to go to the people running the event.
Yeah, I would say this is, this is an incidental change. This isn't a change of the policy, it's just a change of the language of the thing. So I think we can waive the third reading, second and third reading. Is there a motion to accept file KF as amended February 6, 2013?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And the second one is going to be a second reading on distribution posting, distribution and posting of promotional materials on school grounds. I guess we heard back from the lawyer who said that because we're a school, we don't have, we don't have to let people do, post signs or whatever, but if we allow one person, it's kind of, kind of open the door to others. So that's why we're going to the school partners, go the route of only allowing the school partners to have that ability.
And basically, what he recommended here, in the, in the first reading, we had a statement that says, "while not explicitly prohibited, that we'd take necessary measures to make sure any of the following events on school property don't interfere with the educational process," and it was holding signs, demonstrating protest, distributing information, leafleting. What he said is, "as a school, we have the right to restrict that even further and not allow it at all." And he said, "you're better off to not create an open forum and to restrict it where you can." So they, he suggested striking all of that and just saying it's expressly prohibited, and that we'd only allow school partners to post their information.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I liked how he put the election law portion in there because that...
Because we are an election site, so we have to follow the law there.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay, and so we, then we have a third reading?
We have a third reading?
And this is the cost that we gave the information for you earlier on.
So what we want to do is change this to May, we want to firm this up a little bit, right?
We put the language in there.
So it's 60-day delinquent?
Six-day termination or denial of participation of activities.
So that's after 60 days?
Yep, and then we added the statement at our last reading that they would not be eligible to enroll in tuition-based programs the following year.
The only question is the idea of collections. If, you know, if we put that in, we're going to have to revise this one more time and then do a new reading.
How did you phrase it, Kelly? That, yeah, after, after 90 days?
School may...
Reserve the right to...
Reserves the right to forward this to a collection agency.
Right.
And that could go under possible penalties, permissible penalties for non-payment. We could add a final bullet that just says, "school reserves the right to refer unpaid balances at the end of the year to collection agency," or you could say it comes to the school committee for a vote, or...
Yeah, because that kind of goes back to our initial concern with, I don't like the collections idea. If we put that language in there, who then has the authority then opt to pursue that? Because I don't, as I said, I don't, still don't particularly care for it, but I do understand that that option needs to be there at some point. I think there needs to be some sort of check and balance to it, though.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So you could say with the approval of the school committee, the district reserves the right to refer unpaid balances to a collection agency?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that.
So do we also want to phrase in there the ability to extend financial penalties?
I think that should already be in there.
I think we put that in.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah. It's additional, okay.
Late fees may be assessed?
Yeah, late fees may be assessed. That's already in there. Where is it?
We want to be a little more scripty than that, because it's not just late fees, and we do send it to some form of collection agency.
Right.
It's going to be a lot more late fees.
Well, yeah.
Plus, also, the forms that folks sign this year don't mention the collections thing.
Right.
So I don't think you can even get into that until next year.
No, until we add it in.
Yeah.
It needs to be in the contract.
Yeah, and then you're going to...
No, we do that.
Except this is it is, but it's going to be revised separately.
That can be an incidental change. If we, if we change our formula to say that, you know, you know, since we're putting in that it can be sent to collections, if the contract that they're signing says that they're responsible for any collection fees, then I would say that you can make that as an incidental change, you know, with a vote.
Separately.
Separately down the line.
Like in the summer when you're getting ready to send out the things, yeah, that's fine. Because you're also going to have to, if you have the collections language in there, that's going to have to be specifically spelled out, going to your point of date, you have to pay the fees, and that's going to have to be completely spelled out. So this, that actually may end up being more than incidental, because that's going to be pretty substantial language you're adding.
But that could just be on the contracts, not necessarily in our policy.
The policy will...
No, but we could put it in the policies, you know. Well, this is going to go to the lawyers and see how they need us to have it written.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we can cross...
See why, yeah, I mean...
So do you want to just put off this reading on this one, then, to add that?
I think, I think this is fine in there now, because I, and I think the, after 90 days, may be able to send to collections, just being able to add that into the letter, I think is going to...
Do you want it to be after 90 days or at the conclusion of the school year? Any unpaid balance?
I would say we...
The school committee with, with approval of school committee, we reserve the right to refer unpaid balances.
After 90 days, it, it opens the door after 90 days to it. When we actually do end up going that route, is subject to a vote at the school committee level?
I still don't think you can do it this year, though.
No.
No, we couldn't charge, if we sent someone to collections now, we would have to eat the collection fee.
So we'd want to...
But it...
Even beyond that, I don't...
We're saying even if the policy's passed, that it's with the approval of school committee, so I would assume you wouldn't approve it.
Sign a contract, you can send someone to anyone to collections. I mean, I mean technically, you, you know, I don't think we would...
We have enough time, we have hard enough time collecting rental contracts with folks, and those are reviewed 22 days Tuesday, but...
Right.
But as far as enforcing that this year, if the policy's adopted, you've still left in the language with the approval of the committee, so you wouldn't have to approve that, that course of action this year, since people aren't notified.
The question I have, if that comes up for a vote, is that going to be something that just has to pass with a majority or with a unanimous?
No, just a majority.
No, any vote for a majority.
Okay.
So, no, but I, I was going to say, but, you know, like, but I agree with you, Thomas, from the standpoint of, I think until we put that language in the contract, I wouldn't do it this year anyways.
Right.
But, you know, but I...
I don't want to set us up for a whole separate argument that we don't have to get into.
But we can put it in the letters, saying that, you know, we have, we have the right to turn you over to collections.
Yeah, because it may yield results, and that's...
Right, right.
So I don't know if your question was...
If anyone that, will be getting that letter is watching, ignore that part.
Did you want to finalize the language on that? Is it after 90 days or after the...
I like 90 days. I mean, that would give us the flexibility.
Do you want me to have Pam read back what she's got?
After 90 days, the school committee reserves the right to submit the unpaid balance...
To collections?
To a collection agency.
Yeah, I think that...
Or do you want to write, "after 90 days, the school committee," where, I'm sorry, we're not going to...
I believe it is.
"After 90 days, with the approval of the school committee..."
The district, the district...
The district reserves the right to refer unpaid balances to a collection.
Right, because we won't be, we won't be signing them.
I do concur with all the other sentiments, because I, I would like to do it in a way that it doesn't actually affect their credit unless, you know, we have, you know, that's why I'd like to see if the lawyer can handle the collection stuff rather than going to an actual collections agency.
Well, because if you're paying the lawyer for every time they actually do something, whereas the collections agency are not actually being paid unless they collect, and then that person is paying that fee. Whereas a lawyer is going to pay for every time he calls and picks a phone, that's point 10.
And there's, there's plenty of collection agencies out there that do not report to collect. I mean, you can determine...
Yeah, you can set it up wherever you want.
Okay.
Stop it where they don't have small claims, you can, there's levels of it.
I talked to a law firm, and that's all they do is collections.
Yeah.
And they say, you know, "look, this is what we do. It's up to you whether you want them also hit on their credit report." And he goes, "a lot of people that we work with don't even do that, because that's just a whole nother level of legal nightmare."
Do we want to finish the rest of that with any additional language relative to additional costs? Or do we want to just leave that the way the language is?
I do think, yeah, it should be in there that the, that the person will be responsible for any costs incurred to collect this, such debt.
Well, I think that goes into the next year part, though, when we change in the contract that they're signing.
Right, because I think we need to change it. I think we'll have to have our lawyer...
Right, but that can go into the policy, then, and so that when we do implement that in the contract, it's already there.
But we can't put it in the policy now because we don't have that language in the contract.
Yeah.
So I think we have to do the contract first.
And they have to make an incidental change.
Yeah, and then we can do an incidental change. I don't think that would be a...
Yeah.
Okay.
Contract is important, but that makes sense.
Right, okay. Okay, any other, oh, is it, any other discussion? Was this...
That's the third reading, so...
This is the third reading, so is there a motion to accept Exhibit 9, File JQ, Student Cost Fees Funds Tuition and Charges as amended on today?
So moved.
212.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving right along, new business. Renewal application for school partner Norfolk Rec, Exhibit 10. Oh, it's on, nope. Nope, that's not that one.
That's the school partners in here, yeah.
Okay. Pam, it's confusing me. No, I got it. Okay, this is for Norfolk Rec. Pretty self-explanatory. She just listed all the things that they're, they're currently doing based on our policies. She apologized for her poor penmanship, but we evidently do not have a printable PDF version online. She typed it all in, did the whole thing.
Who creates this, Sean? Is there something that we could have them go back in and make some type of PDF version?
Well, I think we need to change, we need to change the form anyways, from the standpoint of, this isn't really a renewal application, this is an initial application, but yeah. I talked to Adam about it and having it being more checkbox, you know, much more interactive where you can, you know, you know, "this is how I fit, this is why I fit," you know, so a lot of dropdowns and things like that to eliminate the...
Click to submit.
Right. And I already talked to Adam about that, and so he said he could definitely do a Google form and set it up that way, so.
Okay, cool.
See, look, look at me being technological.
So proud of you, Sean.
I love it.
Okay, doo-doo-doo. Any other, I have a couple new business items.
Do you want to book on that?
Oh, is, oh, is there a motion to accept Norfolk Recreation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jen LaFond, just kind of last minute, wanted to make sure, she's doing a, it's on your, it was an ancillary that we just put in. Jen LaFond, who is resident in town, actually John LaFond's wife, is doing miles for Melanoma. She's doing a charity run walk on the same course as the Jingle Bell Run, and she, which so it, you know, starts and ends at HOD, and she just wanted to make sure that she could start and begin the...
When is this?
It's, it's in May 20th, May 21st, somewhere around there. And she did tell me that, so luckily I remember that part. There won't be any raffles on sites, you know, and she said she'll clean up everything. It's 11 to 1, nothing inside the school. And I think it's just very nice for her to ask from the standpoint of, usually we're not asked anyways, it just happens. So I want to make sure, everyone okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing, I had more for, just kind of some housekeeping things, probably more for you, Ingrid. I know there are some new leaks at Freeman. What's being done as far as reporting and/or repair?
We are working with, everything now, any issues are being, that Toby identifies are being CC'd directly to Fontaine and to Greg Cohen. Fontaine is responsible for coming on-site and repairing things.
Okay.
But we're, we've closed the loop so that everybody's notified instead of just one or the other.
Okay, okay. I got a call, a couple of calls from a few people over the past month saying that it appears that the lights are on basically 24/7. People are driving by, some of the neighbors have complained that the light's on in the school. There's just a ton of lights on.
I haven't heard that, but I'll look into it.
Let's see, is the heating system, I've gotten conflicting reports, is it 100%?
It was, we had some issues with the gym and the media center. They have come out, and there were some issues on some of the rooftop units that were missing parts that needed to be replaced, but my understanding is now that it is, is pretty consistent temperature-wise throughout the building.
And how's your office, noise-wise?
It's back to being pretty loud.
Okay, so is the heating system not 100%?
Well, the heating system's working, it's the vibration of the rooftop units that they've put over the office, which actually is tied to the freezer. So whenever, whenever they open the freezer, it vibrates.
Okay, great, awesome.
So they're working on a solution for that. They said that they think they need to put some sort of absorbent pads in there.
And despite the fact that it wasn't specked up for that location on the plan, they're not taking any responsibility?
They should be able to put rubber mounts on it.
They're talking about rubber mounts or something, but it hasn't been resolved.
Like a mile? Like not even, not, nowhere...
When they're not opening the refrigerator, yes.
They just, they just, oh, they got it up, you know, on, on one story, instead of putting it up two stories, they're like, "ah, I'm kind of tired, it's good enough here."
Ingrid, what type of response are we getting from them?
Well, you know, they came in, and they've had engineers, and they've had several people look at it. look at it. They had an initial fix where they tightened all the ductwork, and it worked for a little bit, but now it's back to vibrating, so they're, they're looking at that again.
As far as building meeting, that was the, which was back in December, I think, was, that was what was reported to us, that there was no worries.
It was 100% fixed.
It was, it was better, but it wasn't a long-term.
You were sick that day.
But the report was, it was the greatest thing in the world at that point.
Right.
I would say it's not quite the greatest thing in the world, but it's better.
What is your actual responses on these? Is it 48 hours, 72 hour, when you make a request?
Some of the, some of the things have been slow.
I'm keeping it out there. You're funny guys.
Yeah, yeah. It's been an issue they've been working on since-
After 48 or 72 hours, they hit the delete on the email? Does that count as a response?
All right.
And then I guess the last thing I had was, you know, from, from a punch list standpoint, I know Toby's working on a punch list, and Bob Bullock is working on a punch list. Do you think it would be worthwhile to get the staff involved and have, you know, every single, you know, every single eye on the place and have everyone, even if we get the same thing 10 times?
Yeah, I think Lisa's been getting pretty consistent feedback from, from staff when something's not working, and she has compiled the list.
Right.
But to put out one more email to everybody just checking.
Just go through, every single person, go through your room if there's anything and everything, because it's, it's one of these things, if we don't-
Fix it now.
Fix it now, we're going to be paying for it. So, I mean, you know, and we've paid them $30 million, that they should be able to have it be perfect.
Yep, I can ask Lisa about that.
What happened to the, were we investigating the gym floor?
We are still investigating the gym floor.
That is ongoing. They're actually bringing in a guy to do, was it called a Spalding test?